I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the freedom of our wishes. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a moment of silence for all of our first responder heroes, as well as military heroes that have lost their life in the line of duty this year and will not be joining their family this year for Christmas. You may be seated. Kristen, has the whole call been taken?
Yes.
Adam, would you start our introductions this evening, please?
Adam Young, City Planner and Zoning Administrator.
Don Rice, DPW Director.
Tessa Sweeney, Director of Senior Services of Community Engagement.
Kristen Tannen, City Clerk.
Ellen Glass, City Manager.
Jerry Link, City Council.
Pam Haud, City Council.
White Gilder, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor of Protown.
Tom Hicks, City Council.
Denise Miller, City Councils.
Brenda Simons, City Councilor.
And we have no absent members tonight, so we're going to move on to the special presentations. Is Ed Colito here? Do you want to applaud? How much? Can you see if he shows up?
Yeah, maybe we can just keep it like that.
Okay, let's do that. All right. We have no public hearings. There is a correspondence in our packet this evening from the Park's office. Ellen, do you want to give any detail about that or no?
Actually, I'll let Kristen from the Park's office put it up for us, please.
Thank you. So it's just something that my office received, recognizing good election voter registration practices. And it was an honor, and it's not just for me, but it's for my deputy, our office staff, as well as our election inspectors that help us with the whole election process. It's just wanted to share it with everyone.
Way to go. All right. And so now we're going to move into public comment. Got a couple of different things here tonight to read. Any person wishing to address the City Council during the meeting will get three minutes under public comment. When the public comment is approached on the agenda, individuals wishing to speak will be called upon utilizing the build-out comment forms. Remarks should be addressed to the Presiding Officer, and it is not a time for debate, but for questions or comments for Council and/or staff. Questions will be answered if the information is readily available. If the answers are not available during the meeting, Council or staff will contact the individual within 48 hours and respond to the questions within 10 days of when the information becomes available. And then just a little bit extra tonight, just because we have a lot of people here. During public comment, individuals may address the Council on matters related to city business. Speakers must state their name and home address, and remarks should be addressed to the Presiding Officer. Public comment is not a time for debate. Questions will be answered during the meeting only if information is readily available. Otherwise, the staff will follow up. Exactly what I said. No person may speak more than once on the same topic until everyone wishing to be heard has had an opportunity. Members of Council do not respond to comments or questions during public comment. Responses, if needed, will occur later in the meeting. Mike Deetz.
I actually turned two in. I have one under the consent agenda, and I have one under new business. I'm not sure what.
So this is the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, yeah, so Mike Deetz, 408 Linden Wood Drive, Linden, Michigan. I kind of started with why I'm even here. I've been on the Board of Review, I think, for three years. And two of those years I spent under two very qualified individuals, Craig Newberry and Mark Victorini. And they were exceptional in this role, and they gave me a lot of training. In my third year, they both retired, and I got a new staff. I will say, when the first staff was first assigned, it basically imploded. And the people that were named in this process all, I guess, declined at some point for some reason. And we found ourselves without a staff. So I was tagged to help find new people. And I did. And one of the people on the board is a person that I recruited. That's on the presently. But at this point, aside from me, everybody on the Board of Review only has one year of experience. And it was a pretty light year at that. Yet, for a reason I don't understand, I guess I am removed. It isn't like, I don't think I'm removed for cause. I don't think I did something wrong. I'm understanding maybe my term is up, but I don't know. In a volunteer, do you automatically get kicked off when your term is up? Maybe it's up to you guys. I guess you can. You can take off if you want to. But I do think you should appreciate your volunteers. And the way I found out that I was being removed from Board of Review is because I, I mean, what are the odds that I would be looking through the Board of Review, I'm sorry, the City Council Agenda packet, and scroll down and find the spot where it said Board of Review, and my name is missing? So then I called the city and said, "What's up?" And they said, "Yeah, you've been removed." And I think the explanation is my term is up, but I don't understand that. I mean, Mark and Craig have many, many multiple terms. And I expected as a volunteer, I would be working in this until, like, maybe through a different position.
And so, you know, everybody take note that it is actually a community suit. So I asked Mr. Brad about the ADU dilemma. I guess I'm going to call it being for R3 only. And I didn't get an answer back, so I'm asking again. And I did look at the zoning map. And the R3s tend to be the smallest parcels. And so I don't understand why R2s are being excluded. So that's my question on that. On the MTA flyer that was handed out at the Grow Linden meeting on the 12th, it had listed that Chiwasi Shores was one of the scheduled stops. But then on the 13th, when it started, Chiwasi Shores was taken off. So I wondered why that happened. I noticed in the financials that we pay Fenton Car Wash and Fenton Winery and Brewing. And no offense to them, but we have those things available here in Linden. And I feel that we should be using those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Mas.
Good evening. I'm Pete Mas, President of Linden Mills Historical Society. I have three announcements here, more than anything, three announcements. I wanted to give you an update on what's going on. Most of you know that we're doing another book. And it was kind of by default that we had to do something. We had, there were actually two reasons why we had to do it. One was to try to raise money so we can continue to pay storage. And the other one is because a lot of people had, there was a demand for another book. And I really did not want to do another book because it was an awful lot of work to do the last one. But that was six years ago. And the new book is on its way. We're about halfway through the writing of it. It's going to be called Linden Legends. And it's about those who dared, cared, and shared. And the people from the past, mainly from the past, who have contributed an awful lot to make Linden what it is today. And it's something, it's a historic book. It's very historic. And also, a lot of information in there that I never even knew until I started doing the research. But there are people that are being displayed in that book that, for example, we have an astronaut in here that grew up in Linden. They went to Linden schools. She's not really an astronaut. She's actually working for the Goddard Space Center in Baltimore. And she, she's got qualifications up the kazoo. She is very well qualified for what she's doing, and she works for NASA right now. So that's one of them. There are, we have a president of the Chrysler Corporation that lived here, that was born and raised here. We have two GM executives. It goes on and on. The book has an awful lot of people and what they've accomplished. And that makes it kind of an interesting book because those are the kind of stories that were never told before. And it's information that never reached anybody before. So it's kind of cool. And I never stopped learning, so I'm sure you'll be real surprised with some of the stuff that's in that book. But anyway, it's, we're expecting to have it available probably in July. We're hoping for the River Rose shooting for that particular date. And that would be kind of a nice time to have it available. The other thing that we want, I'd like to mention is an upcoming date that we have on the 14th of December, which is coming up really soon, is that the Historical Society, in cooperation with the Linden Hotel, is going to have a pancake breakfast. And it's also going to have Santa and Mrs. Gloss there for the kids. And so we will have that coming up. And members from the Historical Society will actually be doing the serving and doing everything except flipping pancakes because I don't think I could do that. But anyway, we are going to be helping out as much as we can with that.
Just letting you know that you're out of time?
No way. Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I just have one more real quick question, okay? And then you can pick me up. Is the City of Linden planning on doing anything for next year's birthday? America's Birthday 250?
Great question.
That's it?
Great question.
And the City Manager could probably answer that at some point.
Okay. I just wondered because if not... That's okay. Great question. Thank you, Pete. I appreciate it.
Great question. Yes, I love to hear the counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like me to present Ed since Ed is here? We're done with public staff?
Oh, okay.
If you turn the card in on the zoning, then I'm saving it for the zoning portion. I'm just sorry. That way y'all, everybody knows whatever you were speaking on, you got through because I thought you were just talking about Stan Eaton. So that's why, Mr. Pizora, you got through. It's okay. It's all right. But I was saving it for the relevant portions of the agenda. Okay. Mr. Colito. Come to the hot seat, please.
I was hoping you guys were in the other room because somebody got pulled over right in front of the childcare. So I'm like, there's my excuse. But I got here and no one can tell. I told them we got a deer and had to take care of it.
Lonzo wasn't me.
Just leave.
Hi.
Hi.
So we are giving this wonderful man, Mr. Colito, an award for my pro nation. Whereas Ed Colito has served the Fenton Community and Cultural Center and as Executive Director of Southern Lakes Parks and Recreation with unwavering dedication for five years. And whereas he has led a life of service, including past military service, service to Linden Community Schools, and has served as a volunteer to numerous boards, committees, groups, and organizations across multiple communities. And whereas we recognize and celebrate his invaluable contributions to the community and his instrumental role in lab pathway initiatives. And whereas Ed's vision and efforts have led to the successful execution of numerous incentives or initiatives that have strengthened and enhanced community spirit and have created countless opportunities for collaboration. And now therefore, I, Elizabeth Armstrong, hereby acknowledge the retirement of Ed Colito and proclaim our grand appreciation on behalf of the City of Linden and Linden City Council on this day, Monday, December 8, 2025. Everyone, please rise.
We're not going to play you off, though, Ed. It's okay. Go.
There's a song. We got a song we made on AI.
Thank you, sir. Thanks again.
You should do the high five.
Thank you, Paula.
It's a pleasure. Thank you. Are you ready?
Would you like to answer the public comments now? Or would you?
Yeah, I can try to answer some of them. I know some of them I'm not going to be able to. Mike Deetz and Aaron Mines, I don't know that that question is necessarily for me to answer. I'll defer to the Council with those two comments. Kevin, 140 Creekwood. I apologize. I'm not sure what you're referring to as far as development on Stan Eaton. We've had, so I don't know. Maybe you can elaborate on that at all. I think you mentioned, did you say you had said something about homes?
Yeah, there were 72 proposed.
So we previously have had developers come to us and approach the city about development. We have nothing that has been added in my...
Because I remember there was...
We've had, I think, two different developers in my time at the city that have reached out to us about the eight acres that's on Stan Eaton.
So that must have been an old... Yeah. Okay, that's fine then.
Yeah, so there was a townhome development that was previously had conditional approval.
Yeah.
It didn't meet the requirements. One of those requirements was a traffic study at the time. So any development that comes in there, we're going to ask the developer to probably, or see the Planning Commission actually had asked for the traffic study to be done because of the challenges down there, exactly what you have referenced. So I apologize. I, that's the information that I have.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah.
Can I answer? There's my good name. Because right now we have a lot of zoning going on. Maybe going on. We don't know what's coming right now.
Yeah.
So at one time that was trying to be put it through. We have that up for sale right now. I'm just trying to be with the meeting and the zoning and the things that we have coming up. I think it's people, the residents need to know possibilities of what could happen. So I just wanted the residents' involvement in this.
Okay.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
And to my knowledge, it wasn't Section 8 housing that was originally conditionally approved. It was townhomes.
Yes.
So to that. And the city does not own that parcel. It's privately owned and it's being advertised for resale. So just to clarify that. Ramona on the Mont Applewood Planning Committee. I guess I'll let Tessa, do you want to address that one?
Yeah, so the last one we had was of June 2025, according to my senior center. And we had zero out of 10 people attend that. So we probably discontinued it because of lack of participation. But we can always retry again. But we tried it for about six months, it looks like. And it was zero out of 10. The most we had for the last six months was three out of 10 people attending. So.
And I know with the, and Tessa, correct me if I'm wrong. I know with the previous, when they were doing it previously, there was challenges with MTA. Those have since been worked out as far as what's working with MTA to get residents or senior members there to go in.
Yeah, there was a point that there was a little problem with MTA showing up on time to make it to the programming. But since then that we tried, it has been fixed.
Thank you. And then Monica Larter, the ADU R3 and the R2. I guess, Adam, do you want to try to answer that? I don't, I might have to have you clarify the question. So ADUs are only allowed in R3, is what she referenced. And then doesn't understand why R2 being one of those is excluded.
Okay, yeah. I heard that. I know that the Planning Commission had a number of discussions about that. I think the reason why the Planning Commission, the draft included potential allowance for accessory dwellings in the R3 district, but not the R1 or the R2, is that the R3 district is of the single-family residential districts where ADU, you can only have an ADU in a single-family residential district. It's the district that allows for the greatest density. And in a sense, when you're adding an ADU, you are intensifying a property by adding an additional dwelling for that person who is there. And I think that was not considered by the Planning Commission, the R1 or the R2, which are lower intensity districts, as something that they wanted to look for.
And in regards to Chiwasi Shores with the MTA, so the MTA services, we had worked with them to try to do a pilot program to allow, just to see what the ridership would be so we could potentially eventually get one of our own trolleys here, similar to what they're doing in Fenton. So right now, we're doing a shuttle to around the city and getting individuals to and from Linden and Fenton as well. It was a very short window. The program is, like I said, it's a pilot program, and it was only offered through January 3rd, I think, Tessa. So I think with Chiwasi Shores being a private property and them not having enough time really to kind of go to their membership and see if that's what they wanted. They wanted a little bit more time, which is understandably so. It was a relatively quick program for us to try to deploy to see if it was going to happen. But talking with them, I think that they will discuss, you know, with their board and membership there to see if it's something that they want to participate in. And we would start the service back up again in May. So we'll continue to engage with Chiwasi Shores and encourage that partnership and things like that and try to answer any concerns they might have. But that's, I guess, my take on it, you know? And understandably so. Like I said, it was a pilot program. It was something that we rolled out relatively quick just to see what the ridership would be and stuff. And so we're learning things as we go as well. But so more to come on that. The Fenton Car Wash and the Fenton Winery and Brewery. The Fenton Winery and Brewery is the one that the Osi worked with on Dilling Panos. I know last year they utilized Linden Brewing. And I think based on feedback is...
Linden Brewery, we reached out to them, and they just had low stock for them to participate in issues Dilling Panos, so they removed themselves from. And then Fenton Winery just provided the wine for this time.
And we always try to encourage, obviously, support local and shop local, obviously. And I know there are some challenges with some of our cruisers and the car wash in town. So I can't really answer that specifically. I'd have to defer to Chief Sutter, but I know in the past it's been some challenging. But we try to utilize any local businesses that we can, so. And Pete, thank you for your announcements. And then, so the America 250, it was brought up at the Parks and Rec. And I do think that with some partnerships with some other organizations and things like that, I do think that the county is encouraging it amongst the chambers, the regional chambers, all of those things. So while we don't have anything specific right now, I do know it's being discussed.
And can I expand on that a tiny bit? Okay. I am on the Board, the Genesee County Board for America 250. So Pete, I will bring you anything that I hear of where Linden might could get involved or that our Historical Society could also equally get involved. I will connect with you. I have another meeting tomorrow, and then I'll connect with you after that. Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I have questions. Based on the few people who came forward and talked about some of these selections, I was not talked to about anything that was on here. I wasn't even asked about my own board. And I'm under commission for Southern Lakes Parks and Rec. So I don't know. I really believe we owe answers to these people. I think that the logic that they used about, you know, letting people know the courtesy. You know, if we removed you from the board, we need to be courteous about that. Let people know that we've done it. So I think there should be a conversation about that item B under the consent agenda. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but, I mean, I believe they deserve respect.
Well, absolutely.
And there are notes going out to them from me.
Did they go prior to the selection?
Nope, not until it went.
Mike, would you just recommend that they pull that item discussion?
Right. That would probably be the appropriate thing to do if you wish, is to pull it from consent agenda, and then it can be discussed in more detail.
I think we should talk about it.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss item B on the consent agenda.
Just so we understand, the motion would be to approve the consent agenda with removing item B, 2026 Board of Commission Appointments, and adding it to item F under new business?
So moved.
Is that...
That's how I understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nick?
No.
Miller?
No.
Hicks?
No.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Armstrong?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Do we have approval for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Simons?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
We are now moving on to new business. The conditional rezoning request for 210 Oak Street. And Deborah Cameron, if you would put in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. This has been kind of a while taking the process. Again, I just wanted to reiterate what I'm asking for. It is a conditional rezoning on 210 Oak Street. Oh, and my address is 10449 Lakeshore Drive in Fenton. The property in question is 210 Oak Street in Linden, which is a triplex, and to my knowledge, has been a triplex for 50, 60, 70 years. It is always rented, and I am not able to seek a mortgage because the zoning does not match what it is being used as and what it has been used as, like I said, for many years. I'm just requesting this rezoning. It's a conditional that I will keep it as a triplex. I'm not trying to change the landscape of the city. Just trying to get a mortgage to be able to keep making improvements as needed, group furnaces, et cetera, on the property. So I just wanted to reiterate, that is what I'm trying to do. And it was requested that I present that when I went to the Planning Commission, and that's what I did, on a conditional rezoning. So I'm just requesting that you grant this conditional rezoning for 210 Oak Street. Thank you.
Do any residents have any further questions on 210 Oak Street?
Yeah, thank you, counsel. And I support what she had just indicated. The reason why that property currently cannot get a mortgage is good because it's currently zoned in a local service district. The same issue that I spoke with at the November meeting when we only had a partial board present. There was a lot of work done on Avenue Home's part with the City Zoning Planning Commission. I want to thank you for all the work you've done over the last year to give a bunch of recommendations and ordinance updates to the zoning. I want to thank everybody at the city who answers the phone and is there to respond to emails. I sent a couple of emails to a couple of counties. I sent a couple of emails to a couple of council members in response to that. But I want to thank everyone at the city that picks up the phone, we call, we have questions. You do an excellent job. Comes to water, comes to any issues that we have. I want to thank you all for your hard work you do every day behind the scenes because that's what makes this board operate. I think we all want vibrant schools, vibrant communities, and we want a thriving place to raise our kids and our families. There is no such thing as affordable housing in this city anymore, people think, because the average median household in Linden alone is a little over 300,000. Just for everyone's knowledge, there are over 1,000 housing starts in Fenton Township. Linden has 1,500 homes and currently about 200 of those homes are being rented. So there's a huge shortage of homes in Linden. And so we all want better schools, better communities. I think it would make sense for us as a city to think about, do we want to participate in that growth that's happening around us or do we want to ignore it? Anytime a housing development gets started, a developer has to go and get first zoning approval of the site plan. In order for a development to happen and get grant money, they have to have 20 to 30% of those houses or a significant amount be available for low-income housing if they were seeking grant money. That's not happening in any of these states, nor the 72 unit because there's never been an application for that. But I do want to indicate that what he did behind the scenes to go through the whole ordinance, scratch off, make recommendations for the board and recommend it is something that all the council members should not take lightly and they should review the meeting before they get here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just letting you know, this is for 210 Oak Street.
It's the same issue. It's the same issue.
Thank you. Councilman Link, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess the only question I have is for Adam regarding this zoning in a scenario. And this was something that I actually came from you, Tom, but so I'll give you credit for it. But okay, if we approve the zoning, the rezoning of this particular residence because it was 40 years before even maybe this, even before the city was a city. If that property is sold, is the rezoning, does the rezoning go with that property? I know if the house were to burn down, it would be brought back up as the same, as a triplex. It wouldn't be changed to a quad or anything like that. But if that property was sold or lost for whatever reason, new ownership, does this special ordinance travel with it?
Yes, zoning runs with the land and any future owner of that property could operate it as a triplex. The conditions of approval, if this is approved, the applicant has voluntarily offered a condition and that would be memorialized in the conditional rezoning agreement. One of the conditions is that no uses under the R4 district zoning would be allowed on the property except for a triplex, duplex, or single-family dwelling. So any future owner of the property would have to comply permanently, forever, to any, to those conditions. So as long as a new owner would continue to comply or adhere to those conditions, then they could, the rezoning would remain in effect.
Okay, so for instance, a townhouse, they want to put townhouses there?
No.
They could not do that because they're not following the original, okay, yep, all right, that's one clarification on that, thank you.
Councilwoman Howie?
Oh, no, I just got my question answered.
Councilwoman Tyne?
Question about the mortgage, is the mortgage for the improvement of the property or is that mortgage to buy another home in the city? Are you like a multiple rental owner? Where would that money be going? Would it improve this?
Yes, the house is, the roof needs to be replaced as well as two of the furnaces. I've already replaced one, but I would love to replace the others and then the siding eventually will have to update.
Is that a condition of this request?
So just, just to clarify, I think we have to stick to items and questions that are specific to the zoning itself and special condition, the current mortgage and that. It's something that, you know, it doesn't have any bearing, I guess, specifically. Yes, that's why she's asking for the conditional rezoning. But the basis of what she's using it for really doesn't have any bearing on the application. Just to clarify.
Fair enough, okay.
Councilwoman Howie?
In the provisions, Adam, I talked to you about this. I'm going to try and use my microphone because I know I'm losing my voice here. So in this, if this building, God forbid, burns down, has to go back to bi-level, single bi-level, tri-level, can't go past that. That's the condition.
That's correct.
Okay, if this building, if this house does the same thing, can someone else come in and buy it up and attach it to another piece of property behind it if it's not zoned residential?
A change like that, attaching it to another property, would require them to come back through this entire process again if it's a different rezoning or even a request to modify the conditions that were previously approved, public hearing, Planning Commission, council approval for anything like that.
Okay, I guess my last question would be, there are some provisions that she put in to, she voluntarily put in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Mike, may I address you?
Sure.
Okay. Provisions put in there by her, fine, you said those will be put in. It's now going to be in R4, so it's going to be a commercial piece of property. She sells it, guy wants to develop it, he can come in by legal, by law and contest those for her, that was put on her speculation.
No, you cannot do that.
He can't do that.
No. So conditional rezoning, conditional rezoning, another way to phrase it is contract zoning. This, the provisions that she has voluntarily offered to attach to this property, if you accept it, it's reduced the writing, it gets reported with register of deeds. Anyone who wishes to come in and buy that property then is on notice if that's the only thing that it can be used for. They cannot come in and contest it on her behalf or contest it on their own behalf. They buy it with those conditions in mind or they don't. So that is the virtue, a virtue of conditional rezoning. You know what you're getting when you approve this, you're getting just this. If it was a straight rezoning request, she could say, you know, I want to do a tri-level, but she could do anything that's allowed within that zoning classification. What she's doing is saying, I promise this is the only thing I'm going to do and you've got a way to hold her to it.
Thank you.
Councilman Nick?
No questions.
And mine have been answered. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the conditional request to rezon from R3 single-family residential district to R4 multiple-family residential district. I second.
With the conditions as proposed.
With the conditions as proposed, thank you, my...
Link?
Link? Yes.
Hicks?
No.
Armstrong?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Simon?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance number 425, an ordinance admitting section 154, zoning housing focused zoning ordinance amendments.
Just really quickly, just to clarify, she, it was approved, so she was...
Howie, would you like to...
I really, I know this is, I know this has come back multiple times. This is from the previous meeting. We didn't have a full council. We were asked to bring it back. Adam's done a great job of summarizing where we've been, how we've gotten where we've been and proposing several different motions. So I guess with that, I'll let Adam, if he'd like to add anything.
Yeah, I apologize if I wasn't at the last council meeting. I did talk with staff to try and get some of the questions that were asked and comments that were offered. I just wanted to maybe mention a couple of things. Of course, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the specifics in here. I did, I did want to remind you that there, there's a large packet of amendments, as you know. It isn't necessarily an all for, all for nothing kind of a thing. If there are specific items that you feel are not appropriate, whereas other items you feel are appropriate, then you can decide to adopt some, but not all, of the amendments. I did share a couple of items based on what I've heard from the conversations, maybe that are causing the most concern. I'd be glad to talk about any of those, but you may consider moving forward with the amendments or asking us to take those certain proposals out of the amendments for further review. We'd be glad to do that. A couple of things I think maybe also were mentioned at the last meeting or maybe prior meetings, just that I wanted to clarify that we are, the proposed amendments do not make any changes to the zoning district map. No changes are proposed to the zoning district map. So any property, property's current designation will remain the same. And one of the things also, I think, with regard to the multiple-family residential zoning district, this was where a number of the kind of new housing types were, are proposed to be allowed. This is already a multiple-family residential district. The zoning ordinance right now would allow for apartment buildings, for example. One of the things that our ordinance didn't previously do was clarify some of the newer types of housing that are in the multiple-family residential kind of broader category. Our zoning ordinance didn't define townhouses, our zoning ordinance didn't define cottage courts, they didn't define three-family dwellings. And so it's not that they wouldn't have been allowed under the R4 district under the current language, but what we've done is we've defined them so that we can also specifically regulate pieces of those various types that are relevant to those various types, like cottage courts. It's kind of a newer thing and you wouldn't want to treat them like a multiple-family dwelling. They have maybe different standards that would be applied, but the same is that it still is the multiple-family residential zoning district. And there aren't that many properties zoned R4, although there's certainly some as shown on the zoning district map. So I just wanted to mention that, but I'm here if you have any questions or need anything for me.
Thank you. We're going to go to the public comment. Mike Dietz?
It's my lucky day, I get to go first place. Mike Dietz, 408 Lindenwood Drive, Linden, Michigan. Hey, for the last year, I've been attending the planning commission meetings in support of their rewrite of the exterior lighting standard, which I was very happy that they did great work on and you all approved, so thank you. But in the course of that year, I was repeatedly exposed to this and I learned a lot about it. My initial reaction was like, ah, I don't like this, it sounds kind of scary and maybe bad for the city. But the more I learned, the more I realized that it wasn't the case at all, that, that for example, maybe they shrunk the minimums house size a little bit. Well, I can tell you, my kids, they don't want big houses. In fact, they live to the mantra of happiness is a small wrench. So I don't think there's anything nasty there. This is accessory dwelling units? I mean, my grandma lived in one of those and my brother-in-law Kevin had one and he lived on waterfront property. So I think they can be well-controlled and policed by the city and it's another opportunity to make living in Linden a positive experience. Another change that's in the standard, I think, is that there's just houses and building styles that weren't mentioned at all. I don't know what would happen when people wanted to bring those into the city, but like townhouses, for example. So those are being addressed and defined more clearly in the standard. And I can tell you from my personal, I don't have a timer on, from my personal experience, I watched my city near where I grew up turn down a big development. And what did they do? They built it right on the property, the city line on the outside of the city. So it doesn't mean we aren't going to get these things, it just means we need to control them or we can live in the city. And the last thing is, some of the zoning sections have greater restrictions defined than they have now, like R1. I know there's some things that aren't clear and could be built in R1 right now, or I think it was something with group homes or something like that. So there's greater restrictions on that in the R1 and there might be other examples too. So those are the positive things I saw. I know we all have opinions. Let's put it to express that I have a very positive opinion towards this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. My microphone has died, so I apologize. Stephanie Shaw?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Shaw. I live on Hyatt Lane and I'm here today to ask you to vote now on the housing ordinance. Our city is already dealing with a lot of congestion, our roads in our neighborhoods. Adding more high-density multi-unit housing is only going to make those problems worse. More units mean more traffic, more strain on our police and emergency services, more pressure on the resources that keep our community running smoothly. I'm also worried about increasing housing density without having the proper infrastructure. I know like Fenton Township has been building a lot of subdivisions, so they're building on the outskirts of Linden and adding more dwellings to the inside of Linden, that's just double the traffic and crime, more crime, more people, more crime. When we grow too fast without the support system to handle it, it affects the overall stability, safety, and quality of life for the people that already live here. And I know that this ordinance has already been voted on and didn't pass, so I wasn't sure why this was being brought back to vote again. And repeatedly bringing the same proposed proposal forward feels dismissive of the community's prior feedback. So for these reasons, I'm asking you to consider the long-term impact on our city and vote now on the ordinance. Thank you.
218 Hyatt Lane homeowner?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Charles Sweeney, no relation to anyone in the public workplace, except for I from Iowa. And then in that case, we probably are related a long ways away. But anyway, I'm here regarding the multiple units and re-talking, revisiting that parcel of land and its potential growth issues. And I support change and growth in this community. I do not support the pure number and numbers that have been brought up in the past. That unit, you don't need to do a parking or a drive-by survey and pay money for it. You drive by there when school's getting out and see the traffic that we have. Our traffic, I live on Hyatt Lane, it's 25 mile an hour residential that most people do boarding on. And we're going to get, we're getting pathways now, there's going to be more kids walking to those schools and the pure number of traffic, it's not, those roads are not made for. There's a major reason why I would not personally want that. We do have a lot more traffic than we ever had. I've only been here 10 years. I wish it was 40 because I would have moved out here a long time ago and been a lot happier. But I love our community, it's a great place to live. And then one other issue that I have is, what's this, these units going to do to the water pressure if you did allow something like that? Because right now, I've got a big increase in my, in my water. The water is better quality. Pressure, I flushed my toilet, I can't wash my hands still, it hasn't changed at all. I mean, that's terrible, but. That being said, I don't, I do increase, encourage single housing dwellings there, maybe 32 single-family houses, but the traffic and all that, no, we can't, we can't take that. And I don't even know why it's being brought up again, but maybe we can set it in stone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Heidi Fletcher.
Heidi Fletcher, 1570 West Rollston. I wanted to say thank you to Adam for taking the time out to speak with me after the last meeting. I did send a follow-up email just to touch base on everything that we had discussed. And I started it by thanking him for taking the time, but I will also like to reiterate my thoughts. As discussed today, I do have significant concern regarding the potential zoning amendment in relation to the development and redevelopment of downtown Linden as per our current master plan, with particular attention to zone R3 and the central business district. Both areas are noted to have amendments proposed with the intent to allow multiple family dwellings in these areas, whether mixed-use buildings or standalone multiple family housing, including townhomes. Also, an amendment to zoning in R3 is the allowance of accessory dwellings on the property of single-family dwellings. Linden's central business district and surrounding R3 is already at capacity for traffic without an available solution, as stated in the previous council meetings. The redevelopment of the VPW site in the central business district with additional multiple family housing will only lead to greater traffic congestion. Allowing accessory dwellings and townhouses in R3 creates an even greater problem. Through utilization of the Michigan Housing Writing and Center grant, it does create a concern for income-restricted housing to become part of the R3 currently single-family residential zoning through developer use of Michigan grants that are being proposed currently. While this is not currently the intention of the planning commission, it does put Linden at risk of future development on privately-owned properties in the R3 district. Again, increasing traffic concerns as well as posing the question, is this really what Linden's residents envision for the community's future? The master plan presents Linden with a great opportunity to build a vibrant business district with attention to community comedy areas for recreation, as well as making all areas of the city limits accessible to its residents. It is also evident that the master plan includes a process for generating revenue for the city to further its ability to carry its goals and objectives. Generating revenue should not compromise the center of our city. Thank you for taking the time to talk to me.
Thank you. Noah Morgan.
Me again, I want to apologize for my frustration, but I'm here as it relates to one line item in the local service district that's an existing ordinance in our, in our Linden area. Where the property owner has a 1013 North Bridge Street, it's right south of Sloan's, it's a duplex, it's a residential house that's been there for over 100 years. It currently is in a local service district, which means that it can only be used to operate a bank, a dental office, a veterinarian clinic, a business. I have no intention to operate a business out of a house that's 125 years old, where it's been a residential house for the last 100 years. We'd like to sell the house. I have three kids that go to school here in our community and we put the house up for sale twice now and the houses fell through because as 210 indicated, no one could get a mortgage on this property. Due to the existing ordinance that's on this property, it's currently a non-conforming use. So on page 60 of the 185-page ordinance that's marked up and read by Adam with number of amendments on page 60, there's a line item that he recommended be proposed and added to this use where a funeral home can operate, a church can operate, a retail alcoholic beverage, I could open a liquor store there, a daycare center, sale of weapons, you could have a gun shop in your community, but none of the things that people want in town, by the way. It's currently a single-family dwelling or a residential, if you want to call it multifamily because it's a duplex. Again, we would like this item to be added. It's G, section D, a multifamily dwelling on the second floor and above. And the second item that he added was F, a single-family dwelling and any used building or structure accessory thereafter. And two, be added to that section. So in order for this to go through, a motion would have to be made by a city council member to add in to the ordinance, this property can be used as a single-family or multifamily dwelling, not changing the existing structure that's there already, not asking me to burn it down so a shop can go in there. I don't want it to burn down either, more does anybody else. But we currently can't sell the property. So it's a problem for us, it's a problem for my family, and I appreciate if the council take a little special consideration and look at the issue, more than just a template that we're going to have section eight housing, which nobody wants in the community, by the way. Everybody does want a single-family affordable housing in the community. If anybody has a mother-in-law or a father-in-law or anybody in their family, they want to deal with an condo, condominium unit typically, or ranch with, they don't, wheelchair accessibility. This is an affordable house. It's a house that we'll sell for, under the median house price, Genesee County. We put a new roof on the house, we put two new air conditioning units in the house, we put coot and furnaces in the house. It's a nice home for somebody to live in. I hope that someone on the board will make a motion to add this to that section under our local service district to add multifamily.
Thank you. Martha Wright.
I guess my biggest question to this council is, why do we have boards of commission to work diligently within their individual groups' perimeters, then not listen to their recommendations? Take the zoning ordinance amendments, for instance. I'm not for it, I'm not against it. The planning commission worked on these along with the city planner for five meetings and one public hearing and there was no interest of council, there was, I don't think there was invite to public hearing. At the work session where this should have been, where this was presented, there was little to no discussion at all and it seemed like this was ready to be approved. When it was brought back for approval, I felt that there were some counselors who were prepared and wasn't the discussion, the question faced supposed to be at the work session? After the meeting, I emailed three counselors as a resident, asking, asking what part of the ordinance, the whole document, or the whole document that they disagreed with, and I got one response. I was hoping to have individual responses and not follow the leader, as it sometimes seems. I was disappointed that as a resident, my emails did not even get a one-word response from the other two. They have addressed not answering requests from residents, so non-answer from counselors Hicks and Miller were surprising, but then not again. Last thought, you spent more time on chickens and beer than you did on this issue. Thank you.
We're now going to start with council questions. Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I see the public's turnout, I do appreciate it, this was a very good subject to be on today. I motion that we postpone this ordinance number 425, ordinance amending section 154 zoning, housing-focused zoning ordinance amendments to the February workshop. As of January's workshop is full with other things that we've put on hold because there hasn't been workshop. That will give us time to go over this properly.
Is there support? I would like to add something to that. I would like to.
May I just quick, is this time for council comments or are you asking for motion?
Well, this is my comment. This is, I'm motioning that we postpone this to a workshop where we can have time to go over this amendment, so where the public can be there and we can.
So, so.
There's 100 amendments in that.
As mayor, I think we should take council comments and find out if they want to add on to that.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. I'm just asking, if there's a motion on the floor, we just need to see if there's a second. If not, we'll move on.
There could be a second in the discussion.
Right.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Miller.
The last meeting I went to, I have been, they said that I need more knowledge and I need more education. And people can, can come in and I need to seek other people's opinions. I have thought of my own, of what I want in this state. I have listened to the residents, of what I, what they want in this state. I have looked at the plans for this city. There's quite a few things that I want not to see in the zoning, which I don't think residents want to see. I think we all need to be respectful on how we treat each other. I think the somewhat name-calling, or just because we don't agree with people, doesn't mean we're bad people. Sometimes we're just more thoughtful. And I think we really need to do better. We really do. So that's my opinion. I, I like what Tom's suggesting, only because we need the time to hear from the residents if they want some of these things in the zoning. And I don't know where we're at with that. It went to planning, they got to ask a lot of questions, they got to really deep dive in it and I think we need to deep dive in it with the residents in this city. We've got 4,400 plus residents. I'd like to hear from most of them. So that's my, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman, second.
So there's a line on page 30 Adam has included here and it says, council can either adopt the amendments excluding one or more of the above, or we can prepare a new amendment package eliminating one or more of the above for further review by council. Number one is reducing the minimum floor area requirement. Number two, allowance for accessory dwelling units. Number three, allowance for townhouses. It sounds to me like most people just aren't comfortable with the townhouse part of this. If we could vote on part of this, I'd like to know what folks here are, no, are you in agreement with one and two, and maybe not three, and might we need to, might we be able to approve the local service district, Bridge Street property for a single-family use, or single-family dwelling? So can we do something like that, Mike? Is it possible to?
Well, as to the second thing, no, that's not before you tonight, is at least as I understand it. Tonight is just the zoning ordinance amendments. It is absolutely possible for you to move forward with some aspect of it and not with others. That's, this is your discretion.
Um, Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I was actually asking a question. Mike, when you're talking about 1310, so what you're saying is that hasn't been up to planning, nor has it been considered to.
So at least as I understand it, we're just talking about the ordinance amendments. We're not talking about any particular piece of property. This is a general revision to your zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Specifically, that's the local service district.
Excuse me, sir. That was absolutely everything.
Excuse me. You're out of order. Excuse me.
Okay, so if I can, no, it's okay, we're good. I do agree with Tom that maybe we should dig into this a little more. I just wondered if parts of this we could approve tonight and then come back and, and talk about the rest of it in another session. I do believe that number three on here does deserve a work session. I'm looking at the reduced minimum floor area and just the accessory buildings. I personally love the idea of the smaller homes if we can, especially for older people as a father-in-law, whom might need a place to live and I have a beautiful, a carriage house that could turn into a home for him. I mean, as long as we stick to making this a family thing, I just think it makes it easier on families to be able to come together in a time when everything is really expensive. So is that possible, Mike, having an agreement for the first two items that are before us and then coming back with the?
As I said, this is up to council. If there is a motion that you approve some aspect of this, but not the entire thing, that is doable.
I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Councilman Link.
I second Tom's motion. So I, I do believe it needs to be discussed. I know a lot of residents have given me input, their opinions on what they want to see the vision of Linden becoming. I know there's a lot of concerns on traffic and other things. This is a very important change to the city. I mean, this is, you know, up there with the water and I think it needs to be thoroughly discussed, gone through completely, so that everybody on council has a, you know, understands completely what is being proposed and what's not. A discussion on how each one of those items impacts the residents, the city, and then voted on. And if it takes two months or four months, I think this is critical that we get this right.
Thank you.
Because it's going to affect the, once you make a decision like this, you can't come back. Because once you're going down this path, you're stuck and we got to make sure we make the right one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold your applause, please. Hold your applause, thank you, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Hall.
All I wanted to add with Tom, because I agree we should look at this as to how to bring, to bring it back, but to look at individual sections of it rather than all. Because there are some that are just, I think it's just confusing. Someone is literally updating of language and allowing for some smaller dwellings, smaller single-family housing. And I think that would be much more palatable, because it's huge, if we had it in sections. And so that's what I wanted to find out, is how do we split this apart and, and look at it and bring it back? That's all I wanted to add, Tom, because I agree with you, I do, I do. I'm not, I'm just.
Am I going to walk that out?
Okay, thumbs up, I agree. But I just, that's all I wanted to say, simply is that we need to come back, look at these sections, figure out which ones really aren't a change, not like drastic, it's like language. And what parts of town, I mean, you might have this language change, but it's not going to affect because it's already developed. So either way, that's all I, that's all my, that's my two cents. Oh wait, I'm sorry, they got rid of the penny. That's my nickel. Okay, thank you.
Oh, a dime, a dime, okay. What about a dollar?
Councilwoman Dick.
No, we, I think we just come back to work session, but then we need to task Adam in planning commission with what we want to see. Because I think we need to go farther. I mean, we've heard suggestions from the audience that we need to do things to improve business in town. Okay, so maybe our zoning ordinance isn't specific enough for what is allowed in the central business district. Maybe we, our local service district needs to be more defined, you know, do we, what do you actually want to see? You know, other cities and towns will tell you that we want these businesses in our central business district, these businesses in our local service and so on and so forth. And we may need to, you know, enhance that to make our downtown the downtown that we want to be vibrant. I don't know if we, you know, I know I can get a haircut downtown. You know, we need, if we want things to be vibrant, walkable downtown and we want shopping and we want things like that, we need to look at what we're allowing in these districts. But as for this one here, you know, bring it back, what we need to task Adam in planning with what we want to see. Because if we send it back down to planning and it goes back to us and it bounces again, the planning commission is, for a reason, they recommend, the city council, whether we approve or deny. That's the, that's the job. But we need to re-task them with a better focus on what we would like to see.
Madam Mayor, can I ask you a question? I'd like to bring this all back, not just personally without, there's, I am not interested as far as having small houses behind a house. I think it's going to come down to how we're going to deed that house in the future. If my sons should get my home, you know, do they have to only put it to a family member? We're trying to understand that. They'll only go to a family member and it has to be rent-free. I just think we're going down the slippery slope of how we do this. We have to be very conscious of how we do this. So I agree with Tom, bring it back in February, get the planning commission what Brad said and get us all together. The planning commission had it many times, a whole bunch of dialogue, and I think that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Okay, I haven't got the speakerphone, sorry. I'm just, I would like to just get a quick turn and then we can keep it on. Okay. So the first time that I heard. So the first time that I heard about this was April of 2024, in the planning commission. So the planning commission has had it for quite a while. And they have discussed it, and they have looked at it for quite a while. And I think that when you're dealing with something this large, it really needs to be handled with care. And I'm not saying that the planning commission did not. I am simply saying that we also equally deserve the same right to handle with the same care. My concerns with this is not strings. And I've said this to a few people. It's not the strings of the grant. It's the doors that could be opened because of said grant. Those are my concerns. And because of that, I am interested, yes. And in continuing to talk about it, I am interested in and looking forward to a vibrant downtown area. And... But I'm most interested in talking to the residents and finding out over the course of the next two months what they're interested in, because that is who I sit here for. Councilwoman Hill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one little simple question. Just like the conditional rezoning for 210. Oh, is that possible? That we could do a conditional rezoning?
No.
No?
Okay. So to that point, first of all, conditional rezoning has to be offered by the homeowner, not by council. Number two, we are here talking about general amendments. We're not talking about changing any particular person's zoning. There is a process that has to follow any rezoning laid out by statute. And we've not followed any of that. Okay? In general, no particular person.
Yeah, all I wanted to know is if you could petition. That's all.
And any property owner can petition the city for rezoning or conditional rezoning, but that is separate from tonight.
Right, right. I understand. That's all I wanted to know. You could ask for rezoning.
Are there any further questions?
I have a question. Question.
All right.
Miller?
No. Wait.
The motion, to be clear, is to postpone until February. That's what you're voting.
Sorry. Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Howes?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Rex?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
We're going to move on to resolution number 24-25, approving relocation of the early voting election site. Are there any questions from residents on this agenda item?
Can we speak on it?
You can, yes, sir. If you go up to the microphone.
I just want to bring... Kevin Bizar, 140, Creekwood. I just want to bring up, I was an election inspector in fact. And we had an issue where there was something on the ballot. And we were at a church where we held the... I think John, St. Joe's. And the issue was, they didn't like what was on the ballot, so we had to find somewhere else to go. So with this, this is something you got to keep in mind. So right now, where we have the election at, if they decide they don't want us, then we have to find somewhere. So just keep that in mind when you vote on this, because, you know, you have a good space here. I know... I don't know if you want to use it, because it's like nine days, but it beats paying for something. Or I hope you understand what I'm saying, is they could say they don't like what's on the ballot. You can't use our building. Then what do we do? So just keep that in mind with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions about this topic? Seeing none. Councilwoman Hill.
I think the relocation of early voting, moving it to the Losi Senior Center is a good idea, and it makes it easier for seniors in the community to get here. And they're more familiar with it. It's a place they come to on a regular basis. We may even get more voters. I think it's a good idea.
Councilwoman Lee.
I would kind of like to see a little more information. This was brought up to us on Thursday. I believe Thursday is when the package came out. I don't know that this is extremely time-sensitive. And, you know, I think it's something that should be discussed. I mean, obviously, the point that was just brought up is an important point, but I think that needs to be discussed in a more broader setting. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Simons.
Yeah, the Losi Center meets all recorded criteria for a polling location. And I agree, the Losi Center is a really great place to do it. That's my only comment. Thanks.
Councilwoman Miller.
I agree with Jerry. I think that we need to have some more discussion in it. Where we were having it at the nine early days, over at the community center, we normally don't have no traffic there. I think that with them being there, we have the security that you need, that we don't have a lot of people coming in with mixing that with the community here for aerobics or other activities. But I do think we really need to search that. Because that's one thing we have is elections are very important. We should be thoughtful and thought out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks.
I think Jerry and Denise are kind of on it. I'd like to look at pros and cons of the two buildings to see which one's the better building. I just don't know enough. So that's all.
Councilman Dick.
My only question would be to ask our clerk why, you know, her philosophy and reasoning behind making this move.
There you go.
She's the authority on this one.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You are in receipt of two resolutions pertaining to the relocation of the City of London's designated early voting site and election day voting polling location. This is actually something that was being considered by the previous clerk and staff after hearing feedback from the election commission members, both past and present, some of our election workers, and some of our voters. Presently, now, clerk staff and DPW help to set up and tear down the early voting location, which then needs to be tore down right before election day, when we're all running around like crazy to reset up and get the church. So that would definitely be one of the pros and advantages. In addition to my stated reasons within my memo pertaining to accessibility, security, and just overall layout logistics for staff and voters, it would allow someone from staff to be present within Losi. And that would just be beneficial to just help direct voters where to go. In the past, we have sought out lending for new schools within the city. But due to school being in session during these days and hours, and there are additional security measures, it would not be conducive to voting operations. Additionally, in 2022, there was controversial ballot item. And though we were not asked to hold elections or move elections then, that certainly doesn't mean that it won't happen in the future. So that would just allow me to plan moving forward. I do know of two other precincts within Genesee County that hold election operations, early voting operations, within their senior centers. So they've been a good resource to ask questions to. And additionally, I guess I'm just asking... Oh, I can speak to the time constraint. So the deadline to move the polling location and to get notices out to voters is January 6. So what that would mean if we postponed this, it would come back to after that deadline, which would mean that I would feel more comfortable at that point not moving the polling location in 2026, keeping it where it is just for the sake that there's a state primary and a state general election August and November. So that's what that time constraint is. And that, again, that's... I have to provide the resolutions to county and the states. They have to look at everything and approve it. And then we have to mail notices to every single registered voter. So that's the time constraint, just to clarify. And I guess I'm just looking for specifics and what exactly you want me to look at and what would make you feel more comfortable. Just specific requests so I can prepare. Please.
Kristin, just a question. Could you elaborate? You can't just pick any place for these. Could you elaborate on some of the restrictions by law?
Sure, yes. So the all polling location guidelines are set forth by the Bureau of Elections. There's numerous things that we have to consider and look at. So I'm just trying to think. Maymont's being has to be a publicly owned building. It has to be completely ADA compliant. Certain levels of security has to be there. There has to be a flow and a layout for voters to vote and wait. Enough voting booths. There's more. Those are the major ones. Parking, a specific number of parking spaces, a specific number of handicap spaces, entrances that are ADA compliant. Those are some of the big ones that we're researching.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know in the past, we used the community centers for the early voting, and we tried it the first time around. And obviously, the community center is not ADA compliant. Correct? The bathrooms are not ADA compliant. So if we had someone, a poll worker or something, that needed that, I'm assuming that was one of the considerations for... Madam Presser?
So what you were saying is, like, have it here. You can set it up, not have to tear it back down for the election. You can say, here's some internal, say, manpower, money, moving things, stuff around, make it easier.
Correct, yes. I... We have to... We're still working on coordinating logistics. But we would have to just... It'd be a lot more... It would be easier to move just from a different room as opposed to...
Madam Mayor?
A milestone room.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So not only is it ADA compliance with the bathrooms, but the stairway going up is also an issue for ADA compliance, I think. And we'd save money by not having to lease the church, correct? Don't we have to pay them some money?
So presently, and what's been done for the last... I think we've been using that location for 20, over 20 years. We've been given a donation, just a very small donation. That's a current arrangement. And as far as the stairs going up, there is the handicap accessible entrance on the side.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry. Okay, I have not gone yet. So can I just add? Thank you. I was just letting everybody think around, but... Okay. So I did see where y'all were going to try to minimize... I'm kind of ad-libbing my own word. Any impact on the Losi program. So can you please... Because I guess that's where my concern is. So does anyone... I don't know who to ask on that, but is anybody willing to address that? Because that's my biggest and largest concern of all this.
So I did work with Tessa. I brought it to her. And again, she was the previous clerk that we originally were considering this with. So I just wanted to make sure that these operations would minimize the interruption. So I've been working with her as far as the scheduling goes. So I'll give you my seat too. So there's multiple rooms at Losi, as you guys know. So we could also do dual programming while this is happening in the other room. We also have the annex open as well. That could be an option for them. We also could do the storage room, if anything, for AV boards or anything like that. So there is other options. Obviously, as this being the first time around, we'll figure it out as we go. But I think it would be feasible.
Okay, and then I have one more question. So my concern is when you have people coming in to participate in events at Losi, that for nine days, they're going to be getting handouts for nine days, well, plus elections, so really 10 days. They will be getting just bombarded by election material. Is that at least on election day? And I just want to make sure that that's okay.
So on that point, first of all, there shouldn't be any election hearing taking place.
On the outside.
Right. Within that distance.
Outside, right. Outside is what I was referencing to. But when they park their car, and they are coming here to participate in yoga or whatever the event is, and then to consistently be getting... Because I know different people send different folks with their, you know, campaign literature and material. And they may or may not realize that yesterday, this same person got the same thing. And then you have the signs that will have to go out and be out. Is that going to be a problem when it comes to our seniors? Because this is supposed to be theirs first.
So Mission Election Law, yes, does not allow any campaign material up within 100 feet of the any polling location entrance. So we kind of have a challenge right now as it is with the community center parking lot, because it's close. So it is something that our election workers do monitor every each of the nine days and periodically go out, just as they would on election day. So they would be asked to either remove the sticker or the bumper sticker, what have you, or consider moving to a different parking spot. So... And as far as utilization of the center, something that I did clarify with the state, the Bureau of Elections, there was some concern I had just making sure, because we have a county senior village, just making sure that all was well with using the center that is being funded by the village. And they said that is completely okay, just as long as we do not have any campaign materials on those days. That's good, clear.
But they are still... There can be signs. There just cannot be campaign material 100 feet and distributed 100 feet from the door. Correct.
Correct. It has to be 100 feet away. And the only signs that we typically have is just directing people, like directional, like early voting site here, or precinct one here.
Well, at the church, there are all the campaign signs typically. That's what I'm asking.
It's 100 feet away from the entrance.
Right, okay. But they're still going to be able to do...
It's 100 feet away.
Okay. That's where I was going. Okay, thank you.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Dees, 506 North Big Street, London. This facility, the senior center, meets all the requirements you need for people to vote. But there's a problem. There are activities going on here all day, and voting would definitely disrupt what's going on here. There's an alternate place that you own or control, the old VFW, that's now called the community center, I think. It has parking, it has bathrooms, it has access for a handicap person to walk in from the East End building. And there's nothing going on there ninety-nine percent of the time. You can set up, leave it set up, do your voting without interrupting anything. I don't want to see the senior center become everything that the city needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yes? Kristin, could you designate a door in front of the building for people to come in and out of, just voting, that keeps them away from the other door?
Um, yes. It would just be either coming into the front or the side, and then I completely give, because I actually use this term as an exit. So that's an option.
Okay, and, granted, correct, there is no handicap accessible bathrooms, which is a big thing for seniors, if they have to come in that building at the community center to use if they have a wheelchair, correct? Right now? Okay. Thank you.
I will just say, I wish we had had maybe just a scotch more time on this particular topic. Hopefully, moving forward, just a scotch more. Okay, so is there any further?
I come over here sometimes when the parking lot is absolutely full of cars, with seniors on trips and doing activities here. And I don't think we need to have people coming in, parking their cars here to do the election, and parking their cars there to vote. This is a senior center. It was paid for by seniors, and it should be preserved for seniors' use before anybody else's consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 24-25 for relocation and designated early voting place in the city of London.
Support. And to clarify, right, you said 24, 25, or?
You want to do both together? Both for approved resolution 25-25 for approval of relocation election day voting in the city of London.
Support. Simons?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Motion, Chris. Thank you.
Moving on to the Southern Lakes LOC Financial Cooperative Agreement.
Madam Mayor and City Council, you have a review. Our revised contract with Southern Lakes Parks Rec. Mr. Toledo and Tessa worked diligently to get this off the ground. It was approved by Southern Lakes Parks and Rec. It has had legal review. So I think that all parties are happy and excited for this and ready to get this approved. So we're asking tonight for consideration for final approval.
Are there any other comments on the Financial Cooperative Agreement at LOC and Southern Lakes Parks and Rec? Councilman Dick?
I'd like to see it's a three-year agreement. All standards, pretty much been the same way. We're just reallocating some of the money for the programming, which is what we've been wanting to do here, do programming after 5:00 p.m., so I look forward to it.
Councilman Heck?
I think it's a good thing. No comments?
Councilwoman Miller?
You know, I think we license these buildings as much as we can, especially for those seniors that work and want to come in and vote after midnight. No questions.
Councilwoman Smith?
This makes me very happy. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Howard?
No, I think it's a really good idea. Get it out there, and we've got our funding.
Councilwoman Lee?
I have no comments.
And I am very excited about this. I am definitely excited about seeing some evening programming coming, especially with our newest member of Parks and Rec, Aye Fletcher back here. That is what she is going to be focusing on. Put your little hand up, Aye. Thank you. That is going to be, her main focus is bringing, you know, working with Parks and Rec and moving forward with some additional programming. So I am super excited about this, and I'm super excited about our direction in Parks and Rec.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept.
Support.
Howard?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to our managers update.
Just a couple of things tonight. I want to thank our staff and everybody behind the scenes that helped make the Frosty Parade and fireworks a success. A lot of stuff goes into those types of events and sometimes goes unrecognized. So I appreciate our DPW, the police fire, and all of our support staff and administrative staff for being able to make that happen. It was a great night, successful night. Our No Shave November was a huge success with our police department. They raised a significant amount of funds and were able to share that with Christmas trees, grass, and angel tree. Proud of them for sure. I know that they were able to be successful because of members at Spring Meadows and things like that, and other people who are very generous. So appreciate that support. Our Save Rouse to School project is paused for the winter months. Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is paused for the time being. Obviously, the weather's up and things like that. Mill project is moving a bit slower than we'd like, but as with any historic building, it always causes challenges. And as they've gotten into the foundation, Don put more detail, obviously, in his report and stuff, but there's a lot of layers there that when they start getting into those things, you know, other things surface. So they're working on the foundation. We were hoping to have a little bit more information this week, I think, on that foundation and potential corrections to that. So, and obviously, the foundation is critical. So we want to make sure that that is, you know, imperative and correct, fixed properly before we do any other renovations. Working on new calendar year-end internally, internally, working on starting our budget process for next year and wrapping up various payroll items and stuff like that for calendar year-end. Don and I met more recently with Presbyterian Church about a potential partnership for parking with their parking lot, to see where that goes. Happy to hear any questions to raise my head.
Is there any other questions for the room? City attorneys update.
Ellen, did you want me to touch on the recording of meetings tonight?
Oh, yeah, I guess in, to help with that. We have been able to do the Mike on the recording of the meeting, and he's given us some guidance on that. So Kristin and I have been able to take that and hopefully be able to bring something back in the new year for discussion and consideration. The other thing too, when you said that, one of the things that we're working on is trying, as you guys know, we've been displaced from the mill, right, for council meetings and stuff like that. And obviously, we're taking up a space from senior programming or the potential for senior programming. And so we've been discussing with the renovations to the annex, creating a space that could be a flex space for council to be in and all of our meetings there more permanently, but also be able to have the necessary equipment to run and facilitate meetings and record the meetings and things like that. So Tessa, Don, and I and the team have been working on that, but allowing that space to still be completely one-hundred percent available for senior programming during the center hours. Additionally, that would help us, if we do proceed with programming in the evenings, it would free these spaces up for programming in the evenings and allow us to be down in the annex. That space is larger than what the mill area was that the previous council was in. And so we're trying, we're kind of planning for that and excited to maybe have something more permanent. So again, efficiency, this is being set up and tore down every meeting. So we're trying to find a solution that just works for everybody and that just makes more sense. So, thank you.
So as, I guess I'll just reserve my comment to when they bring something to you about recording of meetings and then answer any questions that you all may have. Other than that?
Thank you. Thank you, departments, for your reports. And we're now going to move to council comments. Would you like to start, Councilwoman?
Sure. Just a personal note. Any communications with me going forward into 2026? I appreciate those in email, not via the telephone. This is for council and for residents. I have some personal things going on. You may not see me at some of the events because I have some things to take care of, but I'll be here at our council meetings. And also, I'd like to thank all of you for your thoughtful comments and participation. It was, it was refreshing, and I really appreciated the passion and the kindness that you showed to us tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller?
Bear with me, okay? I normally don't need this, but tonight I do. So I need to say a huge thank you for the Happy London. I mean, our summer, our Christmas program was amazing. The people, the volunteers that came out to work in it, you can't beat them. Even like when it's one degrees out and it got cold from it, it was a good, it was a good program. Thank you for moving forward and the information, hopefully, we can get about the recordings. I think that's going to be a huge issue, and if we can move it to a permanent place, this will be helpful too. Thank you for the planning commission, by the way. I know you guys worked on the zoning. We just need a little bit more clarity on how we're going to move forward with it. And city council, when you walk out, you'll see a little gnome. City council bought that little gnome for the LOC center. So I want to thank all the people up here on the board. Lastly, I want to say Merry Christmas to every one of you. I hope you have a good, good holiday and make 2026 better. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Mine's not working either. I just want to say thank you for your turnout tonight. I do appreciate it. I want to thank you for your turnout tonight. This was an important meeting tonight. Looking forward to moving forward on this and wanting the public's opinion. So if anybody wants to tell me anything, please reach out and email to me. I'd be more than happy to work with you. Do appreciate it. Again, like she said, Merry Christmas, Happy London for 2026.
Councilwoman Howard?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Hat Mains did a great job on our London Frosty Parade. And it was a real joy to help the airport and freaks and get floats lined up and all that. And it was a great ride in the London Hotel little train and throw candy out the window at kiddos. That was a lot of fun. It really is rejuvenating to see their smiles and their excitement about being in London. I mean, there had been thousands of, I don't know how many people were there, but there were a lot of people. So it was, it was a great time. This season of giving, our food banks are very short on donations. I found out today, they could use everything from toilet, not toilet paper, but things like canned meats and paper towels. They have, they have a list online, I believe. But also, I wanted to thank that there was a wonderful article I hadn't seen before in the Tri-County Times about God's Love Foundation and their community soup. I just thought it was awesome that Kevin and Heather Green, or Keith and Heather Green started that with God's Love and Pay It Forward. I just also wanted to commend that there's, on the article, there's one of our familiar faces, Ms. Denise Miller there. She's a wonderful volunteer. But no, I hadn't seen this. I'm really behind in my reading lately because of all this stuff going, you know, busy with the city. So, but anyway, in this season, season of giving, let's, you know, think about Pay It Forward does things for the community. There's Angel Tree, there's the Food Bank, I give to your local church, but it all goes back to our community to give here.
Councilwoman Link?
Okay, I would like to bring up after watching, I was out of town during the last council meeting. And I would like to bring up a few things that when I watched the video, and John Claude, thanks for doing the videos, where I can watch it shortly after. But there were several things that kind of bothered me that happened at that meeting, some more than others, maybe, maybe some not meant intentionally, the way that it was perceived. And I perceived it that way in some cases. I've had residents come to me with some of the same perceptions and some of the same complaints, I guess, or issues. So anyhow, first of all, you know, there was, it appeared that there was some insinuations made that, you know, on some of the council members that voted no on the zoning, that the reason that they didn't, that they voted no was because that they didn't understand and if they would just sit down and let somebody that, I guess, somebody that voted yes or somebody that was in agreeance with that ordinance, that they would understand it and then therefore vote yes themselves. I think the reality in this situation is that they did understand and that they genuinely believed that the vote that they put forward was within the best interest of London and in following what the residents of London had told them, what their wishes were for the city as far as how they would like the city to grow. You know, there was also a request made for the only, the council members that voted no, to give an explanation of why they voted no. There was no request made for those that were voting yes. I do not remember this happening in any previous council meetings that I've been to, both as a council member and as, just as a resident, you know, that I've been to in the last several My belief is that the council members do not owe the city or each other an explanation of why we vote yes or no on an ordinance. The only ones that deserve an answer if asked that question, and this is just me, but if you ask me, the residents, are the only ones that are owed an explanation of why I vote yes or why I vote no. And if somebody asks me, I will give you an answer. It may not be the answer you like, but I will give you the honest answer. And I feel that only the residents, because that's who we work for, that's who we report to, they're the only ones that really deserve. Not saying that somebody couldn't say, hey, I'd like a little more explanation, but maybe brought up privately and say, hey, just so I can have a better understanding why you voted yes or no. Also, it was, you know, there was a mention about council members not asking any questions on the zoning. And I've talked to Ellen about that, and I got an answer from her. I mean, I did speak with Ellen prior, but I was not at the meeting. So, and I did speak with Adam. I appreciate the time that you spent on the phone with me, as I was dropping in and out of phone calls, going through Kentucky. But, but, you know, it's, you know, I think to make the statement, it could be misunderstood that, you know, hey, you know, they didn't reach out to the city, therefore, they didn't do their research, when somebody could have easily done their research. They could have done it online. There's a lot of research. I know there's residents that have researched the MEDC, the, you know, where some of these ordinance changes seem to have originated from. Maybe they've asked, I know several council members that know people in other districts. They could have went to those districts and those, they could have been their confidants and said, hey, I trust this individual, I, you know, I went to them, I asked, because I know that everybody on here, I believe everyone, I guess I can't say I know, but I believe everybody on here does their research and is looking at what they feel is in the best interest of the residents of city, of the city. So I just want to be careful on, you know, maybe how some of those statements are made, that it could be taken that, well, maybe some of these council members aren't doing their research, when I think they are. Maybe they're just not coming, maybe they're not calling the city, maybe they're not using the resources that the city, maybe they have other resources. And like I said, this is just something, when I watched the video, I was like, wow. And then after watching the video, I got responses from quite a few residents saying the exact same thing that it couldn't, they're like, wow, that meeting was crazy. So just moving forward, either we clarify our statements that, you know, they're not meant to be offensive to someone, or just be careful in how we approach things. And that's all I have. And that's all I have.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Councilwoman.
Edie, I have a comment to make.
That's great, good, it's my turn.
When you're finished, with respect.
I first want to thank everyone that served Linden this year in all capacities, all those that served on boards and commissions. It is very appreciated, everything that you do and the volunteer hours you put into the city. And now I'm going to read this, and this is probably the most real I've ever gotten since sitting on this seat, but it has to be said. Over the past year, I have spent meaningful time reflecting on my first year as mayor of this beautiful city, our accomplishments, our challenges, and the responsibility we carry as elected officials. We have worked to reduce the burden of water costs by pursuing appropriations packages, and I have continued to grow in how to best communicate with our residents, represent their concerns, and determine which issues require public attention and which can be set aside. However, tonight, there are matters that can no longer be set aside. City council exists to represent the people of Linden. We were elected to serve our residents with integrity, professionalism, and respect. We on council should behave respectfully, act professionally, and follows our, follow our rules of procedure without exception. Over the past year, there have been repeated instances of conduct that falls far outside of what is appropriate for this chamber. Personal remarks, inappropriate comments, deliberate misrepresentation of information, attempts to undermine respectable dialogue, and even personal attacks directed at my children have occurred. These behaviors are unacceptable and have no place in our local government. I have addressed these concerns privately with those involved, but the conduct has continued. What I am sharing tonight reflects my personal opinion. It is not the opinion of the city of Linden or my fellow council members. It is my opinion and only my opinion. But I want to be clear, I will not tolerate this kind of behavior moving forward. We are here to do the work of the people, not engage in conduct that distracts, divides, or damages the integrity of this body. My focus is and will remain moving the city forward. We have important and positive initiatives planned for 2026, and I am committed to ensuring that our time and energy are spent on the business of the city, not unnecessary conflict. I also want to take a moment to sincerely thank Brad Dick for his service this year as mayor proctem. His commitment and efforts on behalf of Linden are appreciated. I am grateful for what we have accomplished in 2025, grateful for those who serve on this council, and grateful for the residents who continue to support and strengthen our community. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a very happy new year, and I look forward to moving Linden in the right direction together in 2026.
Okay, so I agree with Jerry, nobody owes anybody anything. However, as part of a highly functioning team, we will have work sessions. We have discussions, right? Thoughts should be shared openly, but strategically. Work sessions are meant for discussion, clarification, exploring options, asking questions, understanding impacts, finding common ground. They're not meant for brandstanding, attacking, making final decisions, surprising people with confrontational statements. So yes, sharing thoughts is, is expected. That's a high, it's a, it's a product of a highly functioning team. So when I ask someone a question about their understanding, and I know that I do that a lot, right, I sent Liz and Brad notes that when I ask questions, my questions are valid because I want to understand, because there might be something I can glean from it that changes my decision about an ordinance or about a vote that we have. So I think that needs to be, just a clarifying point to what you said. I agree that, you know, some comments that have been made, I haven't heard any, but anything you've heard that's inappropriate, that's, that's not right. But all effort should be made to work together. That's where a work session is. I just don't want people to miss that. And yeah, I use my resources outside of the city, too. I think that's great. We should, we should get as much information as we can, but we come back and share it collectively. And I'd love to see that next year. I'd love to see more of that in our work sessions, picking apart, this ordinance is coming back. This ordinance is coming back because apparently we don't understand the whole thing, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that, or it's big, it's huge. So I look forward to our next work session and really getting into it.
Madam Mayor, was this a debate session or is this council comments? I mean, if we want to have a discussion?
Oh, it's not today.
Am I allowed to speak? I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
If this was a council comment, but your statements were directed.
I was clarifying, clarifying comments, sir. Clarifying comments.
Is this your turn to speak or is this my turn to speak? I think there's supposed to be decorum, and it's supposed, we're supposed to handle this in a certain way.
I'm not debating you.
Please don't interrupt, Madam.
So, but you directed those comments at me. I didn't direct, I didn't call your name?
Excuse me, you are violating the rules of procedure and you are out of order.
Did I interrupt you when you spoke? Please go ahead and answer that.
I'm listening, sir.
Okay. So, to direct those comments at me, these were comments that were brought up to me and towards about that statement, about individuals that those comments were made directly to that were offended by those statements. And to sit there and bring it up, this is council comments, you want to have a discussion with this? I'm more than willing to sit down and have it between the two of us, between anyone. So, you know, this was just council comments, I got to make my comments, I guess we just keep going around and around. After this, maybe you want to make more comments? I don't know. But if you do, that's fine, you can have the last word at that point. But, but to direct it directly at me? You did, you called my name out. I never called you.
No, I said I was in agreement with you.
It's still my turn, I believe, right? Correct? Okay. So anyhow, I don't feel I was off base in my statements. I feel that other council members on this board probably would agree with my statements, whether they want to say something at another time. I would, I would prefer they be made outside of public comment with each other, but that's everybody's opinion. That's all I have to say now.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Madam.
My comments weren't directed toward you, Jerry, mainly in agreement. I was just stating what a highly functioning team does. And I'd like to be able to ask questions in the email, and to date, I haven't gotten very many responses for my questions. So I'd love to talk about that at the next work session, how we work together. I think it's important.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Not saying any names, but if you want to correspond with me, please correspond with me now on my personal phone, but my email to the city, the C C to all council members. That's all I got to say.
We have a rule against that, don't we? All council members?
Open meeting. We just have to make sure that no one's violating Open Meetings Act, it has to be an email and things like that.
Clean carbon, happy. Information is spread, is okay.
I'll let Mike address that.
Yeah, so there's, there's the risk when you send a message to one and you copy others, people start responding, and then you get into an Open Meetings Act potential violation. It can be done, but it has to be done very carefully. So I would caution you against it. That would be my preference, because then there's no problem. But if you're going to engage in that, be mindful of the fact that you could be opening yourself up and the city to an Open Meetings Act violation.
And I'm going to actually make one more statement, which I wasn't going to find out, and I wasn't going to make sense, but here I'm going to go. So to say that people have, are not educated about something, and yes, yes, that was said, I was actually very educated about what I voted on, okay, with the zoning. I called the M M L. I called M E D C. I called the person that literally helped create this. I called state legislators to find out, given fact what I was hearing was true. I contacted multiple other municipalities that were also equally involved in this. They're on the list, knew it was an M E D C, knew it was M E D C. Okay? So to say that I am not educated or that any member of this council, because you don't know their education level, is absolutely absurd, and it's absolutely appalling.
You're not directing that at me, because I never said that. Never.
So with that being said, I am done discussing this. I'm hoping we can move forward in the proper direction in 2026. Merry Christmas. Sorry for the surprise package at the end here, and I hope you guys have a wonderful holiday season.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn at 8:38.
Before the second.
That was all the way down, and you already got my camera. Merry Christmas all, thank you all, sir, down the wards, the power appointment.